... during the agenda.
Cool deck.
Okay, but I mean, I'm very good.
This is all about great. Yeah. You can call it up if you want to. It'll be a little later than what you thought, yeah.
So he's got my...
When we did the addition, I also had nothing to do with that. I mean, whoever wanted to know.
That's right. That's not a good thing. Go ahead and call another consuenean order. Roll call. Brian?
Here.
Larry?
Here.
Schamanski?
Here.
Way?
Here.
Schultz?
Here.
Wenzel?
Here.
Hamilton?
Here.
Kuhn?
Here.
First on the agenda is last month's minutes.
Second.
There's a motion, second, to approve last month's minutes. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Next is treasurer's report.
Second.
Motion, second, to approve the treasurer's report. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Citizens will get to those on the regular agenda location. Next is committee reports. First, ways and means.
The ways and means had one meeting to report. Make a motion to accept the minutes as read.
Second.
There's a motion, second, to approve the ways and mea- ways and means minutes. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
The ways and means committee meeting was held on Tuesday, January ninth, two thousand eighteen, at six fifteen P. M. in the council chambers at City Hall. Members present were Garrett Coon, Robert Schultz, August Huyak, and Brian Kupczak. Also in attendance were Mayor Al Marco, Larry Kupczak, Rick Schmidt, Robert Wenzel, and Brad Hamilton. Number one, we audited all the bills. Number two, recommend donating three bikes for the Easter event. Number three, recommend Reggie Dews for one thousand nine hundred and sixty-two dollars. Number four, recommend a quarter-page ad for the two thousand eighteen Nacusa visitors guide for one hundred dollars. And number five, we heard the library report. Recommend for adoption items two, three, and four.
Second. There's a motion, second, to approve items two, three, and four of the ways and means report. Roll call. Schultz?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Way?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Schamanski?
Yes.
Kuhn?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Okay, next is public works.
Public Works has one meeting to report on. I move to have minutes accepted as read.
Aye. There's a motion, second, to approve the public works minutes as read. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
To the Honorable Mayor members of the Nacusa County Council, public works meeting was held on Tuesday, March sixth, two thousand eighteen, at six thirty P. M. in the Nacusa Council chambers. Members present were Larry Kupczak, Terry Schamanski, Robert Schultz. Also in attendance were Mayor Al Marco, August Huyak, and Rick Schmidt. Item one, discuss Peckham Road Bridge Plan. Item two, recommend water and sewer credit for four hundred and sixteen dollars and forty cents for Steve Stein at one thirty-two Fairview Lane. Item three, recommend hiring Blue Stem for a consultant for urban forestry. Item four, discuss snow removal. Item five, recommend, recommend two thousand eighteen grass moving fees. Item six, recommend renting dumpster from the city, being able to rent a dumpster from the city at fifty dollars and twenty-five dollars per dump after that. Number seven, discuss two thousand eighteen road project. Number eight, discuss thank you sign at Culture Plaza. Number nine, discuss update on the safety plan. Any questions? If not, I'll move to adopt items two, three, five, and six.
Second. There's a motion, second, to approve items two, three, five, and six of the public works report. Roll call. Schultz?
Yes.
Schamanski?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kuhn?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Way?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Okay, next is public safety.
Public safety has one meeting. Make a motion, accept minutes as read.
Second. There's a motion, second, to approve public safety minutes. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
To the Honorable Mayor and members of the Nacusa County Council, public safety meeting was held Tuesday, March sixth, two thousand eighteen, at five P. M. in the Nacusa Council chambers. Members present were Terry Schamanski, Larry Kupczak, Robert Wenzel, Robert Schultz. Also in attendance were Mayor Al Marco, Mike Harche, Dave Ryan Schmidt, Brian Kupczak, Ken Moody, Rick Schmidt, Mark Meyer, and Shawn Woods. Number one, recommend adoption changes to the fire department bylaws. Two, discuss credit card reader for fire department. And number three, discuss new medical supplier for ambulance. Any questions? I recommend number one.
Second. There's a motion, second, to approve item number one of the public safety report. Roll call.
I could put it right next.
Kuhn?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Schamanski?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Way?
Yes.
Okay, next is property recreation and human affairs.
I have a mayor and members of Nacusa County Council, property recreation and human affairs had three meetings last, this last month. Make motion to accept minutes as printed.
Second. There's a motion, second, to approve the public property recreation and human affairs report. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Property recreation and human affairs had a meeting on February twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen, at six P. M. at the Nacusa County Community Center. Members present were Robert Wenzel, chairperson, Brian Kupczak, secretary, August Huyak. Also in attendance, Mayor Al Marco, Rick Schmidt, Adam Declan, Jason Greenberg, Terry Whitmore, Brian Geese, Jason Birch, and Rick Backhold. Number one, we were presented with the completed Nacusa strategic plan. Number two, we reviewed the community survey. Number three, reviewed prioritized strategic issues. Number four, reviewed strategic strategies for attracting families and improving the river. Number five, discussed future effort. No action. Property Recreation Human Affairs Committee was held on Tuesday, March sixth, two thousand eighteen, at six P. M. Nacusa Council chambers. Members present were Robert Wenzel, chairman, Brian Kupczak, secretary, Garrett Coon, and August Huyak. Also in attendance were Pam Vitroski, Lori Jacobitz. Shawn Woods, Adam Declan, Dan Schmidt, Jenny Tolsmann, Nancy Brost, Howard Freeman, and Rick Schmidt of Public Works. Number one, discuss use of Nacusa Community Center kitchen for catering. Number two, recommend funding wallet days not to exceed four thousand dollars. Number three, discuss comprehensive park and space plan. Number four, recommend using precision grading utilities for shelter demolition in Culture Recreational Plaza for four thousand three hundred and twenty dollars with a splash pad grant account. Number five, discuss final plans and schedule for Culture Recreational Plaza splash pad. Number six, discuss Riverside Cemetery's rules, policies, and pricing. Number seven, recommend allied energy installed underground electrical to building and cemetery for three thousand three hundred and ten dollars. Number eight, discuss city and Nacusa Community Street teacher plan. Number nine, discuss Wi-Fi in Nacusa Parks. And number ten, discuss three fifty Peckham Road House and Barn. Make a motion to accept number two, four, and seven.
Second.
On number seven, Bob, are they going underground or overhead?
The plan is to go underground, Larry, and cross the Don Tar tracks to the building.
Okay.
Yeah. I wasn't sure which one.
There's a motion, second, to approve items two, four, and seven of the March sixth property recreation and human affairs report. Roll call. Schultz?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Way?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Schamanski?
Yes.
Kuhn?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Property Recreation and Human Affairs Committee meeting was held on Tuesday, March thirteenth, two thousand eighteen, at five thirty P. M. in the council chambers at City Hall. Members present were Robert Wenzel, chairman, Brian Kupczak, secretary, Garrett Coon, and August, August Huyak. Also in attendance were Mayor Al Marco, Pam Vitroski, Adam Declan, and Rick Schmidt. Number one, held public hearing on the final plan for Nacusa's comprehensive outdoor recreation plan. Number two, recommend adoption, adoption of Nacusa comprehensive outdoor recreation plan. Make a motion to accept number two.
Second. There's a motion, second, to approve item number two of the two, the March thirteenth property recreation and human affairs report. Roll call. Larry?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Schamanski?
Yes.
Kuhn?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Way?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. When we get into the, we'll get that under the business then.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, that's it for committee reports. Next is old business, the raise order for one twenty-two Wood Avenue. Rick, you wanna...
Sure, I can do a little opening. This is regards to one twenty-two Wood Avenue, the raise order. In everyone's packet is a letter and a resolution put together by our city attorney. Our city attorney's on vacation this week. We've had previous meetings on this. Just to go over the, over the past, we did complete an inspection of the property, which was paid for by the property owners. And so we conducted an thorough inspection of the property, and that was on the agenda previously. That inspection, I also did send a copy by email to Tom Higdon, and he also has a copy of that. Based on that inspection, our inspector put together an analysis that in order to repair the property, he's estimating that would cost in excess of fifty thousand dollars to repair it, based on his, you know, inspection of the property for the basement and the utilities and flooring. Based on that, we informed the property owner, you know, of the inspection results, and that this matter would be taken up by the, by the county council. Based on that, you know, the city attorney put together a raise order, which if the council approves that tonight, would start the process to raise the building. So I think the attorney laid that out fairly well, as far as how this affects the, our code and the state statutes to start that process. There is a couple items to note in there that we basically would be giving the property owner ninety days, as of this date, to commit the raise order, if he, to do that. The property owner also would have twenty days within this date to file in the court to stop the raise order. That would be the applicant, or the property, the property owner would be able to go to court to do that. That's their, that's their right to do that, to present that data. So I think before the, the council tonight is the consideration to implement the raise order. I am gonna invite the property owner's mother, who has given her a...
The right.
The right to be able to speak on his behalf, so she can speak to the council tonight. But in your packet is the raise order, ready to go, if the council's ready to enact that tonight. I, I would say, from the staff's point of view, I've been at that property now over the past couple years. I've been on a variety inspections. I, I worked with Shawn Woods, the police chief, on it. And I think from the staff's point of view, that we, we are recommending that the building be raised per the inspection and per the work that's been done there. So based on that, I, I'd like to open up for some questions, or if it's time, we allow the property owner to, to speak to the council.
Have you had any contact with Tom?
Uh, that's a good point, Mayor. The property owner, Tom Higdon, did call me, and we talked by phone about a week and a half ago. He called me from the Philippines, and he did indicate to me by phone that he wanted to save the house, you know, he wanted to repair it. And I said, "Tom, that's not for me to discuss with you over the phone. I, I don't have that authority. It's in the, it's in the city council's hands." And I, I encouraged him to attend the meeting if he could. He said he couldn't, that he would ask his mother to attend for him. And I said, "Well, you need to put together some type of proposal." You know, I said, "I, I don't know what the council's gonna decide," but I, I said, "It's, it's looking towards raising only because of the value, the improvements that need to be done." So he just said, then he asked me some questions about, well, who has to raise it? You know, do I get to keep the property, or, you know, how that goes? And I said, "You know, I don't know all the ins and outs of it, Tom," but I said, "You do, you would have an opportunity, if the council votes to, to raise the building, you would have the opportunity to fight that in a court of law, to ask for a judge to stop it, based on, you know, whatever you're, you felt you had reasons to do." And I said, "How the actual raise order works, I don't know, but you would be allowed to raise the property, remove whatever you want also, if, if the council decides it will forward." So I, I didn't know if he was gonna submit a proposal tonight, or what he was going to do, so that was my contact with Mr. Higdon about a week and a half.
Well, I think that the property could still be in repairs, and Tom would be coming home to do some of that work himself, because he is a construction worker, and he has people that he knows that would help him. And if there is anything that really is, needs to be torn down, he will tear that down, but he wants to save most of it, so that it's livable. And I don't know why nothing was said to him when he purchased this property and paid all the back taxes that were due on the property. Nobody stopped him then, but now that he has paid up all the taxes and everything, now this has come about.
Well, that's between, basically, him and the previous owner. That should have all been disclosed on, at the time of the sale, that there was some major issue with this building.
Well, he thought that he'd be here now to be able to do that, but then other circumstances came up. He got retired. He did forty years with the CPNI, so he did work his life away, and he's got property here and there, and he's trying to get everything, his taxes, everything. This piece of property, he just doesn't wanna let go, and I can understand why. I like it. If I was younger, I'd be purchasing it from him and fixing it up myself. And I'm sure there's places in, in Nacusa that if he was to stick fifty thousand dollars in his home, he probably wouldn't even get close to that, even after all the thing had to be done. And there's homes in town here that, that aren't even worth fifty thousand, are still standing, and they have, they, I'm sure they have issues, but nobody's saying anything about them. So if we could have an extension on that, and he'd come home the fourteenth of May, I'm sure he would get people and himself, end the project, and finish what he needed to do with it. And if there was something to be torn down at that time, he'd be more than willing to let that part of the property go, but he'd still like to celebrate some of it.
Rick, how long has this property been...
Yes, that's correct.
Sitting there undone?
Well, I, I know when I, when I came on board in fall of fifteen, I think the first day I was on the job, I was out there with the, the police chief, looking at the property, because there was an excavation open, and there was a lot of problems. And that was, I, I had heard at that point in time, in October of fifteen, that the property was struggling prior to that for a period of time. So it's, it's, it's been two and a half years that I've been here, that the property has not been adequately taken care of.
Any other discussion? I don't know, I've been by from the outside and seen it, and, you know, other than the pictures that we've had on the inside. I mean, you know, you said he belongs in, or he does construction. Is he gonna be fixing this up to meet code?
Yes, he is, sir. But as soon as he could come here, and the, the ground is not gonna be unfrozen until sometime in May, and he's gonna be here the fourteenth of May.
The only thing I would add to the, the council is that, in, in working with Tom over the past couple years, you know, a variety of the work has to be done by master electricians and master plumbers. There's quite a bit of work that is outside, I believe, of Tom's expertise to do it. And I, I don't know what the property owner, what Tom's expertise is in construction, but there's a myriad of, of work out there that would require a variety of trades in the, in the, to work on the property.
I believe previously, in some of the previous meetings, we've outlined that it needs to be funded, secured, and guaranteed. Permits need to be taken, and a scheduled completion to be done.
We did talk about it.
None of that has been presented to the council.
No.
So...
How long had your son owned the property?
Less than five years, probably four.
It's pretty much been in the same state.
I don't think he owned it that long.
Given the large expenses gonna occur, or through the necessary repair, why does Tom want to retain the property? Is it sentimental value, or what?
Well, there's probably, I can't speak on, for him for that question, but I'm sure because he put his money into it, I think he'd like to see, he'd like to replace it to get it, so he could probably sell it again. And he also said to me, "Mom, I know that your, Anthony, his other son, is going to be selling his home, and he says, 'I'd like to fix it up for you,'" and so that was another, yeah, I guess it would, you would call that a sentimental value, that, and I could see where I could live in the kitchen, the living room, and then there's two bedrooms upstairs, so if we fixed that entryway, which was, you've seen how that bad that was, and going down to the basement, probably closed the basement off completely, that there was still structure there that could be livable. And I probably would end up there, because I, I like it, I really do. I like the outside, I like the way it looks. I don't know, maybe I should be looking for something better, but I like what...
I know, and looking at that property, all the stairs, not just downstairs, the entire stairs going up, the floor throughout the entire kitchen, it, it's completely shot.
Yeah, they all need to be redone, yeah.
The entire floor and the entire structure on the inside needs to be redone, so it's, it's not a simple project, for some reason.
No, but with time and, and heat and materials, I'm sure we could get that done. 'Cause we built homes right from scratch, all the way up, and I've been on the roof with people, and I've done walls, and I've done flooring, so I know what you're saying, needs to be, the structure needs to be done.
Has he done anything since, when he, since he's owned the property?
Oh, yes. We have an electrician in there, and he put some different wiring. There was the outside, which didn't meet the code. He put a, a foundation out there, and he paid money for those people to do this, and when he's out of town like that. And then I had somebody to come and mow the lawn all the time. I did it for a while, and then I had a neighbor down the road that would come every three weeks to mow the lawn when, when it was necessary, because there were times when the lawn wasn't mowed, and then I finally found somebody that would help me get it done, and I paid him twenty dollars each time he came and mowed it, so. And then right now, there's rafters in the yard that need to be put, and then I have to go there as soon as the snow is, is gone, and pick up all the others stuck that's in the yard, and fill up the garbage cans. So we, we would be willing to fix it to whatever everybody on the committee would say had to be done. If this had to be blocked, or torn out, or whatever, we would do that. I mean, if it's been like this, or whatever, I mean, another six months, eight months, and it's done, and everybody's up to code and all that, wouldn't that be something in favor, and then the taxes would be accordingly too, and it would be paid just like it has been?
But it's already been this way for three years, so now we're going to give you, you're asking for another six to eight months.
That's all.
And, but nothing's really been done in three years with the building. So now we're gonna get an extension, when Tom's had it for three to four years, and could've been working on it all along, or having somebody come in that's actually the licensed contractor doing this, and here we sit. I mean, if there would've been some effort put into it prior to tonight, I, I think there might've been a chance to sway the council to, to give you an extension, and even some of the things that we, we requested, as far as a timeline and a, and a, the ability to provide for the funding that it's gonna take to do this.
Right.
And we've got nothing. So, I mean, it's the council's decision, but I'm in favor of, of the raise order.
Well, that's a shame.
It is a shame, ma'am. We, we don't like doing this anymore, and you like us doing it. We're sitting here trying to, trying to help, we've, we've gone as far as we can. I've known Tom my whole life, I, you know, it's not something that we cherish in, on this council.
Right.
It's something that's gotta be done.
Just so you know, if, if that, if that does end up happening too, according to our sheet here, the property owner has the right to go for restraining order. And you can, and if you make the application, the hearing has to be held within twenty days one way or the other. So, you know, that, that is an option you have, if you don't agree with our decision here tonight.
Right. The court, the court may be more sympathetic, I mean...
Yeah.
I don't...
And then, because he's there, I'm the one that's gonna have to go in front of the court, right? On the date that you tell me that's gonna be available?
Or is, you can send an attorney, if you want to, you can send an attorney. You can, you can send an attorney tomorrow. There's, there's...
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we, I don't like it, but I'm gonna do it. Make a motion that we authorize the raise order for one twenty-two Wood Avenue.
Second motion. There's a motion and a second on the floor to approve the raise order for one twenty-two Wood Avenue. Roll call.
Way?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Kuhn?
Yes.
Schamanski?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Now, this gets served on him, correct?
I believe what this does is that, work with Joe and the attorney, we're back, is that this will get...
Filed.
Filed, at the register of deeds.
Yeah.
And that will serve as notice.
Okay. So it'll be filed next weekend?
And just, just to help her, where does, when does she go to, if she, if they want to file a restraining, try and restrain?
Uh, clerk of courts.
Clerk of courts?
Yep.
Up in Wood County?
Yep.
Okay, if you wanna try and, and file a restraining order, you go to clerk of courts up in Wood County, and explain the situation to them, and, and then they'll work with you from there.
Do you have one of these? Schultz, Schultz presented with, uh, sign.
I'll provide her with a copy.
Yep. And then she can take this right up there?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. That I have dispatches and everything on it. Okay, anything else under old business? Going into new business then, first is proposed use for catering. Rick, Lori, just...
Sure, I'll just do a little overview. This was on the property rec agenda this past week, and Lori and her team can speak here. I, I did ask Dan to do some checking on what would it take to, what, what process should we go to work out an agreement with Lori, and what type of price should be charged for renting the kitchen? Dan did a little bit of analysis on it, and he put together a brief memo, and he said that the going rate for these type of services tend to go between twenty to thirty-five dollars an hour. And so Dan thought, based on, you know, gas, electricity, dishwashing supplies, Dan would assist with opening and closing, you know, he would be that, you know, Dan's the type of person to keep track of the, the community center that way, to open and close, help out that way. And that we'd work out a, a contract, you know, for this with the city. So Dan recommended that he thought would be fair is a twenty-five dollar per hour charge for, for the rental of facility. So that was Dan's recommendation, and I think I'd like to turn it over to Lori to address the, the council.
Yeah, um, the only problem I have with that is if it takes me an hour and a half to do a cheese and sausage tray, it's only $35 for that. And like say, Don Tar got a veggie tray today, that's forty. I'd have to actually charge them for rent on that. Nobody's gonna come to me for $75 for a veggie tray and $65 for a cheese and sausage tray. I mean, if it's a thousand dollar wedding, that's a little different, you know? I mean, a cake is gonna take me from start to finish, probably two hours. So if the cake's only like $29.99, now I have to put $50 onto that to cover my cost.
When they could go get a cake at Walmart for a lot less.
Right.
So it would be every, every little thing that you would be doing.
Absolutely. Like this morning, Don Tar called and that's what they needed this morning. So then I'd have to go in there and do that, so I, I would not be, I mean, I'd be giving it to them essentially.
How about, I mean, how about this? Why don't we let Dan, Rick, and Lori get together, figure out a mutual contract, six month contract, see how it works out? You know, we gotta have something.
Maybe we give you something like a sliding scale. Maybe there's something for over two hours, we, we do something that's smaller. If it's a larger event, we do something a little larger, maybe we do something like that.
Right. And then you guys, you three figure it out and then as long as the chair, proper rec chair and a mirror, I don't have a, a problem with that. So that's, that's, that's what I would make a motion that we, that we have Dan, Rick, and Lori get together and make out a six month contract and.
So my question to that would be is, would it be ready to go by April second? Cause I already gave my notice at work today.
It'd be ready to go.
I think we could sit down in the next day or two and hammer things out.
Okay.
I mean, we can get it done quick.
Like you said, just like these two guys, long and Kirk will keep these two guys in, in horn, so.
Okay.
I'll send that motion, y'all.
I really.
Keep the authority with the contract inside of it.
Right.
Okay, cause we, pretty much, there's some things you just can't do, but it's like, having the business with the building is all.
Right.
The expense.
Said you gave your notice, Lori hasn't completely offered.
I'm done as of the thirtieth of March.
All right, so you're good now.
You have to keep it.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a lot of changes, that Piggly Wiggly.
You're one of the fun features, you'll see down there.
Thank you. You can come see me over there.
This, this cake thing, we're gonna talk about too, but.
Okay.
Go ahead and repeat your motion.
Okay, just around the same page. If I understand this right now, it's to, uh, motion by Hamilton, second by Schumansky to authorize Rick, Dan Schmidt, and Lori to develop a users agreement for use of senior center for catering business? For senior center kitchen area?
Yeah.
We're good with that?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Garrett?
Thank you.
You're good?
All right. Can we go or?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Give me a call, we'll set up a call, okay?
Well, no, actually.
Okay, next on the agenda, we've got a couple of resolutions. Um, first resolution is bolt dock, I'm assuming this is transferring from.
Yes, our revenue account to.
Okay, so who would you? There's a motion second to transfer, to adopt budget transfer resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is resolution to transfer the juvenile fund. Motion second to juvenile fund resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then everybody got a copy of the resolution adopting the outdoor recreational plan?
Yep.
Need a motion second to approve that, the resolution to.
I'll make a motion for you guys. Come on, you gotta write it down.
There's a motion second to approve the comprehensive outdoor recreational plan resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Um, Rick?
Yeah, can you? Meeting's not over yet.
Okay, going into monthly reports. First is the police chief's monthly report.
So moved.
Second, motion second for the police chief's report, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is public works report.
So moved.
Motion second for the public works report, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is the ambulance department's report.
So moved.
Motion second for the ambulance report, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is the fire department's monthly report.
So moved.
Second. Motion second for the fire department report, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is community center's monthly report.
So moved.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is building inspectors' monthly report.
So moved.
Second. Motion second for the building inspector's report, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Airport commission, anybody got a copy of that? Ready to have any to it there?
Nothing really, it's just everything's cruising right along. We're getting the eyes out of the. It's a little slowed out, as always, it's the winter time, they can take off. And hopefully, hopefully, but it's gonna be, it's gonna be good projects when we get them all done.
And there's a motion second to approve the airport report, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is bills.
Okay, we had the three bills. Camera twenty, mayor, six hundred, council, five twenty. Ways and Means, two fifty, airport commission, fifty-five. On property rec, we gotta add that meeting tonight.
Thank you.
Was every, was everybody of your members there, membership there?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Okay, so there we go.
Sorry about that.
No, we're good. Six hundred ninety-five, public works, one ninety-five, public safety, two and a half.
Move for reports presented, claims, excuse me.
Motion second to approve the bills, go up. Boye?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Coon?
Yes.
Bryan?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Schumansky?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
Anybody have anything else?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Uh, public works seeking college students for summer help. Public works department for employment is summer of 2018. Applicants picked up, City Hall, 951 Market Street, our website, under notices. Uh, applications need return to the city by March twenty-ninth at 4:00 PM. We're looking for students who'll be enrolled for the school year of seventeen, eighteen, post-high school education. Students should be in good physical condition, be willing to work various pieces of equipment, including our garbage truck, grass cutting, and cleaning equipment, and all other duties. If you have any questions, call Rick Schmidt, GPW director, seven one five, five seven two, three six one four. That way we get some people putting in for these. We're having trouble all over in all businesses looking for some, people looking for summer help, so. If anybody's interested, come on out and make an application.
The other thing also this Saturday is Easter event.
Yep.
So. Breakfast and then the craft show and the Easter hunt for the kids, so. The weather will be pretty decent when it's out. Good for the service.
Yep.
So anybody have anything else?
Make a motion with yours.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.